All right, I'd like to call to order the Bristol, Virginia City Council for February 26, 2019. At this time, please join me in a moment of silence. Please stand for place of weakness.
(inaudible) of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, I hope everybody survived all the rain and the rising creeks and rivers over the last few days. Nice to see the sun now. Upcoming budget sessions start next week, so the big, I guess, item to this week, I'm sorry, next week, this week, all my weeks are running together. So the important part of the season's starting, so I hope everybody comes out and hears the discussions, provides input, lets us hear what your thoughts are on the budget. So it'll be a tough discussion as usual, it always is pretty lively, but that's probably the most important thing we do through the year. So please come out, the budget's important, and we need your input. So with that, any council comments?
I'd just like for everyone to keep in mind Kevin Corbett, who passed away since our last meeting. Kevin, of course, was a veteran of the military, veteran of the police force, served on the planning commission, traffic safety board, electoral board, gave an awful lot to this city, and was known by most people in this room, and I think a good friend to all. So please keep his family in your prayers.
I'd like to just briefly comment, I don't know if the, everyone has seen it, but Deputy Hinkle in Sullivan County had passed away earlier today, and it's really just a terrible situation, we should really keep his family in your, in your thoughts and prayers, and the whole Sullivan County Sheriff's Office, you know, for the bad time they've had and the loss they've suffered.
Yeah, exactly, piggybacking off of what both you guys said, keeping the family and friends of Mr. Corbett and Officer Hinkle in our, in our prayers today.
All right, City Manager?
Counsel, I think most of you touched upon what I was going to talk about, Kevin Corbett, I remember he was probably one of the first people to greet me after I was appointed City Attorney, and always open, open with me, and just a great person that you can count on if need be. And then, of course, Deputy Hinkle and his family, is a terrible tragedy that occurred on Saturday, and ultimately, he succumbed to those injuries. And our first responders, every single day when they leave the home, they don't know if they'll get to come home, and it's an awful lot to ask of people. And in today's society, you just don't know if you'll get to come home if you're a first responder. So hats off to first responders who still go out, do that job, knowing that their life is on the line every single day.
All right. All right, with that, we'll move on to matters to be presented by members of the public non-adjourned items. Couple people come in late, so if you want to talk during the non-adjourned, just raise your hand, I'll recognize you. First person on the list, Donald Brown.
Yeah, I'd like to bring it to the city's attention about the street that I live on, Portsmouth Avenue. I've had my vehicle hit twice in the last eight months on that street because of the way the traffic comes down through there, going so fast, even though it's a 25 mile an hour speeding zone. There's cars that come down through there that go up to East Ridge Apartments that's doing 55 and 60 mile an hour easy whenever they come across the top of the hill. And I'm requesting that the city pitch in speed bumps to slow the traffic down and make Suffolk Avenue a one-way street due to the fact that there's vehicles that turn around on Suffolk Avenue and back, around back into Portsmouth Avenue, that's how my first vehicle got hit. And then there's also a problem on Portsmouth Avenue with the parking along the side of the street where people's actually parking facing the wrong direction where the ones that live on the, when you start out Mary's, or Portsmouth Avenue, they should be facing out towards Mary Street, but there's a lot of vehicles that'll be parked facing the opposite direction, and the police department needs to start unfortunate in having them park in the right direction instead of turning around in the middle of the street.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Anyone else? Michael?
Thank you very much for, you're allowing me to speak even though I wasn't in time to sign up on the sheet. My name is Michael Pollard, I live at 101 Ashley Drive. Today on the agenda, there's a discussion, at least to the point of entertaining a study concerning a very expensive road project. We are now going into the budget series of, of the, the year, and this, I realize that we can't get everything done at one time because there are a very great number of city projects, but this is a great example of one. This road, the bridge, was put in almost 100 years ago. If that bridge had been properly budgeted at that point, analyzed for its expected life expectancy, which would need to be adjusted over time with varying conditions and varying uses, because at that time, we didn't have large trucks traveling our roads, to, and so adjust the expected life expectancy, and over time, adjust the expected replacement costs, we would have had sufficient funds in the bank a long time ago to be able to pay cash for a replacement if that, if replacement cost had been properly budgeted. And that needs to be taken into consideration for every aspect of the city. Buildings have an expected life expectancy, bridges, roads, everything have an expected lifespan, and those need to be budgeted for because eventually, they will need to be replaced. And by properly planning, we won't need to go into debt, we won't need to depend heavily on state and federal funding, we'll be able to pay for them when the time comes by just budgeting it as the time comes. I realize, as I said, we won't be able to get all of those done this time because we only have so much funds available, but we need to include some of those this time and add some more next year so that we can eventually pay cash for everything as it comes up. Thank you.
Thank you.
Counsel, if I may address the concerns that were brought up tonight. Mr. Brown, I know the Transportation Safety Commission did approve those speed bumps, I believe, did they?
That was the Brewer Road.
Brewer Road, okay, not on Port, I'm sorry.
But we can, we can just test on that.
Okay, I was thinking the road that you were talking about was the one that they just approved, so, but I appreciate you bringing that to our attention, and we'll put that in front of the Transportation Safety Commission at their next meeting. And then, Mr. Pollard, this study is paid for by VDOT, I believe?
That's correct.
And then, the majority of the road replacement at Piedmont would be a VDOT project?
I'll comment on what Michael said, because we've been talking about putting restricted fund accounts together, right, for this budget cycle, reserve fund accounts that are restricted for capital asset replacement over time, which city hasn't done, so that would fall into that category. So I think once we talk about how to set that up and how to allocate the funds each year, then we've got to have some kind of a capital project list that's got a priority to it, you know, dollars assigned to it so you can probably spend those monies, but we can't just keep going forward kicking, don't plan for it down the road, so to speak, and then we end up with a big expense and no way to pay for it.
Well, at the, last meeting in January, we presented the capital plan that, where we prioritize, I think there's roughly 37 projects, and there was an outline of what projects we can fund this year. We, there was about eight or 10 different criteria where we scored each one of those projects, and the ones that got the most points obviously had to deal with public safety, and as we move down the list and as we have funding for that, we'll be funding those projects with cash in the future.
So my comment was to set up a fund just for that, which we don't currently have today, right?
That's the capital improvement fund.
Right. Yeah, but we, we don't have a fund today set up to pay cash for capital projects like vehicles, buildings, bridges, right, that's restricted only for that purpose, right? That's the comment.
We have the plan, I mean, it's-
You have a plan, right?
Right.
An initial plan, but no reserve fund restricted for that purpose setup-
Right.
-so we can keep putting money in there as time goes on, that was the comment I was trying to make, so. All right, any other comments?
Mayor, I do not sign up, man, I tell you-
Yeah, come on, mhm, you can come up. We thought we'd lock the door at 601 just to prevent that in the future, but they wouldn't, we thought we'd lock the door next time at 601, so if you're late, you can't come up, but-
I have two things you may choose, which one you want?
(laughing).
Mr. Mayor, members of council, my name is Nancy Marney, I'm a resident of the city of Bristol, Virginia, I'm a property owner. I had not planned to say anything tonight because three minutes doesn't go very far with what I have to say. However, I will say this, number one, are you all talking about the intersection of Cumberland Street and Piedmont, is that what you're talking about?
Talking about Pied, Piedmont, where the railroad overpass, all the way to State Street.
Well, what is it that needs fixing? You keep talking about a bridge.
That's a bridge.
That's a bridge, that whole, that whole section covers the creek.
The, the railroad overpass, is that-
Well, really right near the Health Department.
Yeah.
The creek goes by the Health Department, then makes a hard left, that hard left, the creek is going underneath Piedmont Avenue, so we're really about, at the Health Department, all the way to State Street, you've got Beaver Creek running underneath Piedmont Avenue.
Listen, I'm the one who told the city about, Tabitha didn't even know it, and neither did the city engineer at that time, that there's a cavern underneath the intersection of Cumberland Street and Piedmont, and when that thing falls in, somebody's in for a very big surprise. And I told Tabitha, Tabitha didn't even know it was there, neither did the-
I think that cavern is going to park on, on the-
That cavern is underneath that intersection, and I cautioned her at the time, she didn't even know it was there, and I cautioned her at the time about the load limit on that particular intersection. I said, at Rhythm and Roots, they keep allowing these big trucks to come in and the big trailers to come in and park, you better find out what the load limit would be in that intersection, and she and the, the city, and I don't know who else, got together and put a limit on that intersection there, that is a cavern under there. Now you do what you want to, that's what it is. Now, secondly, I would encourage this council, at this point in time, when you're thinking about budget matters, you're having budget meetings, the various department heads will appear, other people may appear and they may not, but the point is, the main function of a city is to provide for the health, safety, and welfare of the citizens, that's what a city does, and that means police, fire, and public works, that's what that means. The state requires education, that's, that's out of our hands, we have to do that, but police, fire, and public works. Now, we know for a fact that our police department is absolutely spread thin. Everything that's going on around us is affecting our police department and our citizens. We already know that the fire department, we went through this last year, and we already know, I'm gonna take this damn thing out of here.
Thank you, Ms. Marney.
We already know-
Thank you, Ms. Marney.
It looks green to me.
No, it's actually red, but yeah, it's a good try, thank you.
It, you better be careful, or I may embarrass you all with some things I could say and do right now. One last statement, we do know that our health, that our, our fire and police are absolutely spread thin. They need help, folks, everybody else is gonna have to stand in line, still looks green to me.
Thank you. All right, with that, we'll move into the regular agenda. First item, consider resolution adopting the emergency operating plan. Staff report.
Chief Ball, for all of the council. Mr. Mayor, members of council, every four years, this city's emergency operations plan is up for updating and renewed, then approval by the council, and that's what we're doing. It was most recently approved in February of 2015. There's been some minor revisions, nothing of any magnitude to speak of, so basically tonight is just asking for your approval for another four years.
I had a couple questions, I'm just throwing out right now, I read through the thing, it just popped off to the page to me that there's some federal agencies in there that could end up coming here under certain emergency situations that weren't listed, and there wasn't any protocol of how we would deal with those, like the National Guard came to mind, if it's a major emergency, the National Guard gets, you know, sent here by the governor, you know, where do they fall in the command structure, how, what's the protocol with that, the FBI, you know, some other pretty big federal agencies if they show up, so is that something that's kind of embedded down in the plan somewhere that it's not obvious as you read it, or?
The National Guard in particular falls under Emergency Service Function 17, and that's listed in the plan.
Okay.
They would be part of a command structure, but they wouldn't really be in charge, the city manager by, by Commonwealth ordinance would be the emergency manager, and would basically be calling the shots, and anybody in the room in the emergency operations center would fall under his jurisdiction.
Yeah, I understand that, I just didn't know if you had the protocol and the procedures down of how you, how you wrap them up underneath your-
Yes, sir.
-structure, but it's in that, it's in that section.
That's like, the National Guard in particular is listed at number 17 under military-
Okay.
-and any other outside federal agency would be, fall under the same, like with liaison resources, that would all be under the command of the city manager.
Okay. All right, anything else?
No, sir.
Okay. Any public comment? No one signed up for this item? You want to read the resolution, please?
Resolution, emergency operations plan, whereas the- Whereas the city council, the city of Bristol, Virginia recognizes the need to prepare for, respond to, and recover from natural and man-made disasters, and whereas the city of Bristol, Virginia has a responsibility to provide for the safety and well-being of its citizens and visitors, and whereas the city of Bristol, Virginia has established and appointed the director and coordinator of emergency management. Now therefore be it resolved by the city council, the city of Bristol, Virginia, this emergency operations plan as revised is officially adopted, and it is further resolved and ordered that the director of emergency management or his or her designee or task and authorize to maintain and revise as necessary this document over the next four-year period, or until such time be ordered to come before this council, approved at the regular meeting of the city council for the city of Bristol, Virginia, February 26, 2019.
Okay, with the pleasure, counsel.
Move that we adopt the resolution.
Second.
You got a motion, Mr. Hartley, second, Mr. Osborne, any discussion?
Just, thank chief, city manager, all, anybody that worked on this plan, I know, as you mentioned, it's a requirement every four years to bring it back before us, but I know y'all work on it in between, and this is one of those documents that literally does not sit on the shelf, I hope it sits on the shelf, but I mean, y'all work and look at it and make sure that things are up to date.
It is pretty much a living document, I mean, we're, we're constantly revising it almost on a weekly basis.
Well, you know, most, most cities don't recognize that they're going to be faced with something like that till it happens, so I think, think about how to, how to practice that whole plan more often, you know, you never know when you'll lose the entire city's power grid, and you got, you got to bring in power units from all over the country, where you gonna stage them, where you gonna set them up, how you gonna feed them, you know, just, I mean hurricanes learned the lesson the hard way, they show up and there's nowhere to put due power, and so they're trying to figure out for four days how you put, you know, 500, you know, power pole utility guys, so there's a lot to that, a lot to coordinate a big, major disaster, it never, you never know what, what's gonna happen till it happens, but you always should practice, I think, certain elements of it, you know, every year, just to see, you know, more about what the problems are, what the holes are, you know, so you can fix it next year, update it, do that kind of stuff, so. All right, anything else? All right, please call the roll.
Farnham?
Yes.
Hartley?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Wangard?
Yes.
All right, item two, consider resolution requesting the Virginia Department of Transportation conduct the transportation mobility alternatives analysis study of the Piedmont Avenue corridor. Staff report.
All right, I'm gonna give just a little bit of background on it, just because I think a lot of people don't realize that Piedmont Avenue is a bridge, so it's a bridge from just north of Leisure Park Towers down to State Street, and actually over into Tennessee. It was built in 1925, it currently has weight restrictions on it that don't allow, don't allow any of our fire trucks, the really large ones, to cross it, so nothing but really a pickup truck or some smaller things can cross that road. It's, it's pretty severely limited, at least for fire trucks, some other trucks can get on there. The, the bridge is actually, and you have to think about this, the way it's said, it's 42 feet long and 1,200 feet wide, so it's, it's an odd way to look at it, but the state, when they give us funding for things like this, they want a bridge to be repaired in its entirety because it, like if you're building a bridge across the James River, you want to get from one end to the other, and so this is a bridge across a creek, so it's only 42 feet long, the fact that it's so wide, they won't, it would cost us probably $50 million, somewhere in that range, to replace that bridge, and so we'll never get that funded through state of good repair funding from VDOT unless we get them to change the way they look at that, the way they look at bridges, they, they have to treat this bridge different than others. What we'd like to try to do is to piecemeal repairs along the bridge, like get across Cumberland Street, get across State Street, and then there at Good, Good Street, next to the library, and then work on the pieces in between, and so I guess we're, we're gonna have to meet with the state to try to get them to change some of the rules for funding, if, if they will, so the Commonwealth Transportation Board will have to change some of those rules, VDOT and Commonwealth Transportation Board, and so we're, we're trying to work on that, but, but what this particular study that's on here, they're gonna look at access to the businesses during any kind of repairs that we do. They're not, they're not gonna talk about the structural replacement of the bridge, any kind of plans on that replacement or repair, they're just simply looking at access to the businesses during those repairs, and so that's what they're proposing to fund for this. We're gonna eventually, we're gonna have to set up some public meetings with the businesses and people in the area just to discuss what some of the alternatives are that we have before us. Like I said, the, the bridge has just been pushed down the road, nobody's really addressed it, we feel like we need to get it addressed before something falls apart on it. Anyway, it's, it's an unusual bridge, like I said, most people don't realize it's there, so. Can I ask, answer any questions you might have?
Questions?
We talked about on Piedmont, pretty much is what we said, but does that include, if you're on Piedmont and you get to State Street and then you would make a right, does it include any part of State Street right there?
It goes under State Street and then underneath that building that's right there on the corner on the south side, pops out on the other side, over into Tennessee, so and that, that's one thing that complicates any repairs on State Street, is that has to be done in conjunction with Tennessee, and so half of it's theirs basically, and half of it's ours that crosses State Street. In the past, there was a study that was done that looked at making portions of it a riverwalk, so you basically pull up portions of it and just, it'd be for pedestrian traffic. One of the issues with that is there's, there's parking issues down there, and we'd have to figure out a way to come up with, with parking, if we, if we did anything like that, we're gonna have to find a place to put parking down there. And so there, there's a lot of issues that need to be addressed, it's, it's, at best, we're five years away from doing any kind of repairs on the bridge, but this study that VDOT is willing to fund, again, helps us address access to businesses and that kind of thing.
Just, just to reiterate, VDOT will fund the study, we're asking that they'll fund it 100%?
Yeah, they'll fund this access study, not the structural study, none of that.
No, but-
The bridge repair replacement, they won't have anything to do with other than just business access.
Yeah, but that's the first step-
Yes.
-in trying to figure out how to-
Sure.
-keep access to the businesses, and while you can then find other sources of funding to, to replace either, hopefully, as you mentioned, Mr. McCullough, in piecemeal rather than in, in toto, so.
Yes.
How many businesses would be affected by this, approximately?
I'm not, 25, I'm guessing, I don't know, I don't know a good number, to be honest with you, I don't know how many are through there, maybe less than that.
When you looked at those pictures, the, the last study that was done, you know, underneath the, the bridge and a lot of the concrete, you know, crumbling, a lot of the steel infrastructure is exposed.
Yes.
So was there any, was there any degradation over time analysis done of, you know, as five years goes by, or as 10 years, it's, it's degrading, or has it been fairly stable in that condition over the last, you know, 30 to 50 years?
It, I can't remember when they set the, the new restrictions on the bridge, but it's, I've been here almost six years, and they've degraded it one time since I've been here, I believe, so it, it is steadily going down, it's in pork, considered poor condition at this stage right now, in terms of a one out of 10 rating, it's rated at a four, and so like I said, we can't get any fire trucks across it, which really restricts us in terms of access to other parts of the city.
I guess the reason I was asking the question, at some point, an engineering study or VDOT, they could look at it and basically put some serious restrictions on any kind of vehicular traffic.
No, absolutely.
So the risk of, where are we in that, you know, point to where you would have to take it down to one lane or restrict traffic because of the condition underneath is really that deteriorated, that was what I was kind of getting to, how close are we to that point?
And I don't have a good answer for that, we have, we get an inspection done, a structural engineer does an inspection once a year on that bridge, and so every year, we get an update on that, and we could get them next time around to give us some kind of long-term look, I'm, basic, it really needs to be looked at for repair now. I mean, we can't go much further, or else we're liable to have some serious problems.
So will the study that we're talking about, will they, they'll analyze what, what needs to be done, how to do it, would they analyze when, when it needs to start and what sections need to be started first, so you kind of have a, you know, this section's worse than this section, start here and go this way, at least in the next five, eight years, you need to get started, so you progress through it?
Yeah, our, our goal would be, again, to do like Cumberland Street, State Street, to get those crossings, so that we can at least get our fire trucks done, and then the pieces like between Cumberland and State, we could do that a little bit later, I know it's safe for cars and small trucks, but some of the larger trucks, and part of the problem is, is that people don't realize it's a bridge, you drive up to it, you see the sign that, that puts a weight restriction on it, but you look and you don't see a bridge, you just see a road, so you don't reel, so truckers can come through there and not realize that they're crossing a bridge, and they just ignore it and go on, a lot of times.
Well, if a big truck gets down to that point, they get off of Commonwealth and get over one of the hills, it's too late, it's like the point of no return, you get there and then you have nothing to do except go across there, right?
It's marked on Commonwealth that, that turn, but I know people just ignore those things.
Right, you know what I'm talking about, so, all right. Any, any other, any other questions? All right, please read the resolution.
A resolution of the city of Bristol, Virginia, supporting and requesting the Virginia Department of Transportation, VDOT, conduct a transportation mobility alternatives analysis study of the Piedmont Avenue corridor, whereas the Virginia Department of Transportation is seeking to partner with the city of Bristol, Virginia, and their structural engineer to conduct a study that will assess the transportation and mobility impacts associated with various Piedmont Avenue bridge replacement modification alternatives, and whereas the city of Bristol, Virginia, recently conducted an inspection and evaluation of Piedmont Avenue Bridge structure over Beaver Creek, extending from a location approximately 200 feet north of Sycamore Street to a location approximately 100 feet south of State Street, and whereas the city of Bristol, Virginia commissioned an inspection of the Piedmont Avenue Bridge that identified and confirmed various deficiencies associated with the existing structure that are significantly costly to address in a timely manner through VDOT, through available VDOT and/or federal funding sources, and- And whereas the structural deficiencies have resulted in vehicle weight limit restrictions being placed on the bridge segment of Piedmont Avenue for an extended period of time. And whereas the vehicle weight limit restrictions dictate emergency services, i.e. fire and ambulatory response routes, and thus impact response times to those citizens whose health and safety may be in jeopardy. And whereas the Virginia Department of Transportation will partner with the City of Bristol, Virginia, and their structural engineer to evaluate and analyze the influence various Piedmont Avenue Bridge replacement modification alternatives will have on traffic circulation, flow, operations, and overarching mobility. And whereas the city is seeking to evaluate and identify practical, fundable, and implementable roadway and bridge infrastructure improvement alternatives that will result in an improved downtown street network that accommodates all modes of mobility, enhances safety, and sustains economic vitality along the Piedmont Avenue corridor in downtown Bristol. Now therefore be it resolved by the Council of the City of Bristol, Virginia, that the City of Bristol, Virginia hereby supports and seeks to partner with the Virginia Department of Transportation to conduct a transportation mobility alternatives analysis study of the Piedmont Avenue corridor in an effort to: A) Identify Piedmont Avenue roadway and bridge infrastructure improvement alternative that will sustain acceptable levels of traffic circulation, flow, and operations on the downtown street network; B) Assist in the identification of roadway and bridge infrastructure improvement alternatives that are practical, fundable, and implementable; C) Identify opportunities to improve emergency service response times; D) Improve the downtown street network to accommodate all modes of mobility, enhance safety, and sustain economic vitality along Piedmont Avenue corridor; and two, that this resolution shall be in full force and effect upon its passage adopted the twenty-sixth day of February, two thousand and nineteen.
Okay, it's a pleasure, Council.
Move to approve the resolution?
Okay, got a motion, Mr. Osborne?
Second.
Second, Mr. Farnum. Any discussion? All right, please call the roll.
Farnum.
Yes.
Hartley.
Yes.
Osborne.
Yes.
Wingard.
Yes.
Mumpower.
Yes. All right, item three, discussion of refinance opportunity.
Counsel, I don't know if you can see what's there on the screen, but you do have this in front of you. This is a, the entire discussion is discussing summary about sustaining general obligation debt. And through the course of this winter, and several times I was in Richmond, I happened to meet with Davenport and Company in regards to two bond issues, the two thousand six B and two thousand seven B bond issues. Those bonds right now are, we have a, paying an interest rate of four to five percent on each of those bonds. They are callable at this point. And based on current market conditions, Davenport believes that we can refinance these two bonds and pay them off in the same length of time and save the city roughly eighteen thousand dollars a year in the process. The interest rates are lower than what these bonds call for right now, and this is an opportunity for the city to save roughly a hundred and fifty thousand dollars through two thousand twenty-seven. And the purpose of this discussion tonight is to just gauge whether or not that's something you want me to continue on with Davenport. What we can do, if we do decide to continue on and the interest rates are not favorable, we do not have to move forward. But if the interest rates are favorable and it would save the city money, we can move forward after we get those interest rates back.
Questions?
When, if we decide to move forward, at what point will we be able to know and lock in the interest rates? I mean, how quick will it take?
Probably within ninety days. So I think, based on conversations I've had with Davenport, we could probably have this completed by the end of the fiscal year.
So the savings, we could realize those savings in the beginning of next fiscal year going forward?
Yes, presumably, that's the goal. I mean, it potentially could move in a little bit into the next year, but we think we can get that done before the end of this fiscal year.
Right, and just to make clear, the way this is presented to us, it does not extend the payment, terms of payment. And in other words, past councils, when they've refinanced, they've just more or less pushed paying the principal and interest off. This is just taking advantage of lower interest rates.
That's correct, and one of the criteria I had with Davenport was, if you extend our debt, I will recommend to Council that we do not do it. I want it paid off in the same length of time that we have it paid off, that it's scheduled to be paid off now.
So that number is roughly a hundred and forty-eight?
Roughly a hundred and forty-eight thousand. I think they're basing that on a three and a quarter percent interest rate. Once again, it depends what that final number will be, will depend on what the interest rate is.
I think that's a big amount. Maybe some people would say, well, if you have a hundred and some million dollars of debt, saving this much isn't really a big deal, but it sounds like it is a lot, and I'm a big believer in if you take care of your pennies, the dollars will take care of themselves. So anywhere we can do a couple of things here and there to save a little bit, it seems like it makes sense.
Based on the average salary in the city, that's a half a position a year that we save.
Like I say, you know, as long as it doesn't extend the debt, and it can save some taxpayer money, I think it's worth doing. Again, you know, in the big scheme of things, it may not seem like a lot, but it's probably worth going through the efforts of refinancing.
By all means, if you can save money, there's, it seems like it's a no-brainer, so I mean, do what you gotta do.
Yeah, I see no reason not to move forward on this. I mean, it's like, you know, you owe for your house. Then this interest rate drops, and you go in and request a loan modification. The debt stays the same, everything stays the same, term of the loan, except for the interest rate.
Right.
So basically, that's what we've got presented before us tonight. And eighteen thousand dollars is eighteen thousand dollars, I don't care how you look at it. So if we can save the taxpayers eighteen thousand dollars over the next seven years, I see no reason not to move forward with this, other than the fact, the commission that's gonna be charged on the services from Davenport, if they do not lock into this interest that we agree on, we're not gonna have a fee with them, correct?
There, we do have a contract with Davenport right now, but based on the way they usually do these bonds, it would not be any fee unless the bond was completed.
That's what I understood, okay. So I see no reason why not to move forward with it.
So those savings, that was my question, those savings are including in any fees, so that there's no extra fees to refinance that we're not seeing here?
No, that's, the savings are based on what the fees included, and the fees will wanna be roughly sixty thousand dollars, they kind of estimate those high. This would be a relatively simple process. I do not think it would require us to go in front of S&amp;P or Moody's at this point, based on the conversations I've had with Davenport. It would be a relatively simple process.
Now, once you go and refinance, there wouldn't be any opportunity to pay these off in full then, because you'd be refinancing it out through two thousand twenty-seven?
It depends on the call dates, and I'm not sure what that call date would be, even though we are refinancing it, there'll be a call date. It may be a bond that's a, you know, what is this, be about an eight-year bond at this point. Without going through the process, it'd be hard to say at this point.
So that's the only opportunity, I guess, we would lose, is the ability to pay it off if we, you know, had some cash to pay it off. That's the only downside, I guess.
Yeah, I mean, the total, if I understand this right, it's a little over three million dollars.
That's correct.
I mean, it'd be nice to pay that off and be done with it, but unfortunately, we're not there yet, but we're working on it.
Okay, any other questions?
All right, it appears I have a consensus, Council. I'll move forward with this starting tomorrow.
All right, item four, consider a closed session pursuant to two dot two thirty-seven eleven A five Code of Virginia nineteen fifty. As amended, discussion concerning prospective business or industry, or the expansion of existing business or industry where no previous announcements have been made of the business or industry's interest in locating or expanding its facilities in the community, unannounced business prospect. Pursuant to two dot two thirty-seven eleven A one Code of Virginia nineteen fifty, as amended, discussion consideration or interviews of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplining, or resignation of specific public officers, appointees, or employees of any public body personnel. And pursuant to two dot two thirty-seven eleven A six, Code of Virginia nineteen fifty, as amended, discussion or consideration of the investment of public funds where competition or bargaining is involved, where if made publicly initially, the financial interest of the governing body would be adversely affected proprietary. Looking for a motion and a second.
I move that we enter into executive session for the reasons stated.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Please call the roll.
Farnum.
Yes.
Hartley.
Yes.
Osborne.
Yes.
Wingard.
Yes.
Mumpower.
Yes. All right, we're ready. All right, by roll call, both council members certified, the only business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements specified in the motion to convene the executive session were discussed. Please call the roll.
Farnum.
Yes.
Hartley.
Yes.
Osborne.
Yes.
Wingard.
Yes.
Mumpower.
Yes. All right, on to item five, consider authorization to hire Director of Community Development and Director of Economic Development. Staff report.
Counsel, we have been through interviews for Economic Development Director since the mid-part of January, had a couple of rounds of interviews, and throughout those interviews, Christopher Wilcox was determined to interview the best during those, and we feel that he'd be best suited for the Economic Development Director position. And then Mr. Bart Poe, who has been serving as interim Economic Development Director and overseeing the community development, would be, move over to be the Community Development Director.
All right, with the closure, Council.
I was gonna say, I move that we consent to the hiring of the Director of Economic Development and the Director of Community Development.
Second.
Okay, got a motion, Mr. Hartley, second, Mr. Osborne. Any discussion?
Just say I'm glad to see this position get filled, it's needed for a long time, and I wish you very well, Mr. Wilcox.
I look forward to seeing what you both are able to do, and, you know, able to work together, and not only get new businesses here, but be able to retain existing businesses that we've already got, because anybody who's been into marketing or sales knows it's easier to, it's less expensive to keep an existing business than it is to get a new one, but you need new ones. But, so I look forward to seeing how you both work together and seeing what kind of new things you can do for us. So we appreciate, appreciate you both.
So I'll say my couple cents here, I think these two positions, honestly, the two sitting out in the audience probably will have the biggest impact on the city's future than anybody sitting in this room and on the city total staff. So how well you guys work together, and how well, you know, you really take care of the clients that wanna come to the city and strategically go out and figure out who we can get into this city from business standpoint, and then how well the development side works to take hurdles down, to make, to make the process seamless and beneficial to the customers and clients who are trying to get in the city, it's gonna pay huge dividends, right? It's gonna either set the city up for where we need to get to in a shorter period of time, or continue to drag us through the mud. So I wish you guys all the luck. Anytime that you need conversation to any of us, our doors are open, whether our advice is taken or not, it's here, you know, neither here nor there, but we're here for you, okay? Because we want you to be successful. We need you to be successful. So don't be bashful, you know? Randy's want you to be successful, so we're all, we all need to be a team here and make sure that you, you've got every tool that you need to take this city forward. So I say that with all the sincerity I can. All right, with that said, we got a motion and a second. Please call the roll.
Farnum.
Yes.
Hartley.
Yes.
Osborne.
Yes.
Wingard.
Yes.
Mumpower.
Yes. All right, on to the consent agenda, I need a motion to take a couple items out.
So I'm going to move that we take out item six point one, the minute approvals, and vote on all three of them separately.
Okay, so we got one motion to take six one out in its entirety, vote on those separately. Any other, anything else we wanna take out, vote on separately?
No, but I do have one item I'd like to discuss.
Okay. All right, so you wanna go ahead and make a motion to take six one out in a second to make that modification?
No, I'll second that.
Okay, so we got a motion, Mr. Osborne, second, Mr. Hartley, take six one out. All right, with that said, we'll go ahead and vote on the consent agenda each minute.
Are we gonna?
We'll go, we'll do six one first, I'm assuming, as we motion approve it, we'll do six one, vote on each one of the minutes, and then we'll vote on the rest of it. So please call the roll on the changes.
Farnum.
Yes.
Hartley.
Yes.
Osborne.
Yes.
Wingard.
Yes.
Mumpower.
Yes. All right, so now let's go down each minute separately, so we'll vote on six one, the January twenty-second, two thousand nineteen minutes.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion approved with a second.
This is January the twenty-second.
January the twenty-second. Please call the roll.
Farnum.
Yes.
Hartley.
Yes.
Osborne.
Yes.
Wingard.
Yes.
Mumpower.
Yes. All right, now a motion on February the twelfth.
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, got a motion, Mr. Osborne, second, Mr. Farnum, this is February the twelfth. Please call the roll.
Farnum.
Yes.
Hartley.
Yes.
Osborne.
Yes.
Wingard.
Abstain.
Mumpower.
Yes. All right, now a motion on February nineteenth.
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, please call the roll.
Farnum.
Yes.
Hartley.
Yes.
Osborne.
Yes.
Wingard.
Yes.
Mumpower.
Abstain. All right, takes care of six one. Now on to the rest of the agenda items as presented, which is six two through six four. I'm sorry, yeah, six four. So what's the motion of Counsel, or pleasure, Counsel, on those items?
Move that we adopt agenda items six two through six four as presented.
Second.
Okay, motion, Mr. Hartley, second, Mr. Osborne. Any discussion?
Uh, yeah, on the, the vehicle purchase for the police, I inquired about that today and was told it was an SUV, and going through the paperwork, it turns out to be a Chevy Silverado truck.
I was thinking that was an SUV, it's been bought with asset forfeiture money.
Yeah, it's saying here, it's gonna be bought with asset forfeiture money, which that's a good thing, but I'm wondering why the police department needs a Chevy pickup truck, when we've got cruisers out there breaking down.
Is that the type we have?
Yeah. We're gonna go get the purchase rep, it's upstairs. But, I mean, I will say, you know, if the police department feels that they need a Silverado truck, I mean, that's a call that they need, it could be used for an undercover vehicle, I'm not sure if that is a truck, but I was under, I was under the impression it was the SUV.
Well, it says description, item services, one new two thousand eighteen Chevrolet Silverado pickup four by four. That's what it says right here at the top. It's to replace a two thousand four Chevy Tahoe.
Well, maybe that's what I saw or something, but I was under the impression it was a SUV.
I mean, I think it's great that we're getting seizures on assets that's capable of buying equipment and vehicles that the department needs, that's great. But I'm just wondering, you know, is that the best use of that money on a pickup truck?
That's a valid question, right? I mean, what's the, if it's true?
I mean, I just saw, I just saw this past summer, a police cruiser broke down at exit five, being towed. So if we've got vehicles out there during police hours breaking down... Well, this all comes back to capital improvement plan as well, where we have a lot of vehicles on, for all police this year, we'll be replacing some new vehicles, or some vehicles with, you know, whatever the department thinks is appropriate. And, you know, be quite honest with you, if the department head thinks a Silverado truck is one of the best served their needs, then who am I to say if they should get something else, other than rather than getting another Tahoe? I mean, sometimes you just have to defer to the department head, and if the department head feels like that's one of the best served their needs, then you just have to defer to them.
Where do they use pickup trucks today?
The police department doesn't, that I know of.
The only, the only pickup truck that I know of that's in that, in that, is animal control. control.
I can step out and call Chief Austin if you want me to, real quick.
It's a pleasure, counsel. We got a motion in a second. Any more discussion? Okay, please call the roll.
Farnham?
Yes.
Hartley?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Wingard?
No.
Mumpower?
No.
All right, we're adjourned.[1764.13]